Okay, we are going to get started at six o'clock. So I would like to call this information study session of the Lansing School District Board of Education to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Beverly?
President.
Dr. Body? Dr. Burrows?
Here.
Ms. Hodgins? Mrs. Lawrence?
Present.
Mrs. Lurgi?
Here.
Mr. Lopez?
Present.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Mrs. Willis?
Present.
Coram is present.
Thank you very much. Lynette, please correct me if I'm wrong. I don't believe we have any public comment this evening.
That's correct.
Okay, great. Then, um, any additions to the agenda? Any other business that board members would like to discuss this evening? Okay, then we are going to roll right along. And our presentation this evening will be on engagement and enrollment updates. Mr. Sinicropi?
Thank you, President Lawrence. This is the second of each month we will be doing this. And so it, uh, we, we actually have set up, you had a chance to look at it ahead of time. Uh, this will be a real team effort today. Everybody's got a little spot, a little part to play in this. And we'll have a chance for questions as you, as the board sees fit as we go forward. Uh, with all that, I guess I'll turn it over to Ms. Benavides to get us started.
Good evening, everyone. Good morning, Board of Education, Lansing community, Lansing School District family. Uh, it's my honor to put together this information for you this evening. And, um, as Superintendent Sinicropi said, this is an absolute team effort. So you'll hear all of the voices from the executive team this evening as we present, uh, the engagement and return to learn engagement data report for you for the month of October. I'm going to share my screen. Can everyone see that? Wonderful.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Excellent. All right. So, uh, just to recap, the, uh, return to learn engagement data reports are something that the executive team will be putting together every month for the board's review. And of course, the larger community, uh, that tunes into our board meetings or watches the recordings. And, uh, we do want to remind you that this is a month in review. So this data is specific for the month of October. This is not cumulative data. So this data does not go from the beginning of the school year until now. It is, um, purely from October 1st to the 31st. So please keep that in mind as we review the data this evening. All right, I'd like to start out with our enrollment and our vulnerable populations. So just as last month, uh, we talked a little bit about enrollment. As you know, our count day is right here upon us and we're getting ready to close up with our count. In the month of October, um, our enrollment, um, stood at 10,256. Of course, I'd like to remind you that that is not our count number or FTE, but purely the number of students that were enrolled during the time of October. Um, during October, we do a massive cleanup of all of our data in our room. And so, um, you will see, uh, this number change and fluctuate throughout the school year. We do want to point out each month that we do have, um, lots of populations that we serve in Lansing. We're very lucky to be a very diverse community. Um, with diversity, however, does come, um, vulnerable populations. And so we do want to, uh, make the board and the larger community aware of the populations that we serve. And that is the, um, purpose of this particular slide. Um, this data has not changed much from last month. So I'll give you a second to kind of look that over. We're going to move on here to some of the data and services that we provide throughout, uh, each of the months. And I'm going to turn it over to, um, Executive Director, or excuse me, Chief of Financial Officer, uh, John Lang, to talk a little bit about our meals for the month of October.
Over, we provided for our curbside meal pickups and some deliveries, 139,994 meals.
John, we're having a hard time hearing you, sir.
I'm sorry. I don't know if my microphone was covered up, but...
Can you hear him?
Can you hear me now?
Still really faint.
Yep. So, uh, in the month of October, we provided 139,994 meals, uh, which for our curbside pickup, that was for lunch and breakfast only, uh, not included in this count. In the month of October, we started a dinner and snack program. And we also had another 14,403 dinner meals distributed and 13,332 snacks. So almost 165, uh, excuse me, 168,000 total meals or snacks, uh, distributed this October. Thank you.
Wonderful. Um, just as last month, uh, we talked a little bit about our contacts. As you know, contacting families during this time is especially important. And we do those in lots of different ways. But one of the ways that we do track our data is through our synergy system. And that tracks any, um, contacts that are logged by our staff. And they will put input in and what they've contacted families about and the duration or the date of, date of contact. We had over 8,000 contacts made and that would include staff, um, all staff, so secretaries, uh, public safety officers, teachers, and those are logged in, in our synergy system. We also, um, give the opportunity for office hours. This is a really important part of our day here in the Lansing School District for screen to screen because office hours means, is a time where, um, parents and students can log in and have live screen to screen time with their teacher on a daily basis. All of our teachers have office hours every single day for a minimum of 20 minutes. And during that time, students can log in for homework help, advice, catching up on work, any questions that they have. And also parents can log in during that time and speak with teachers. Teachers are available outside of office hours, however. So if a student or a parent needed a one-on-one conversation, um, if they would not want to have other people privy to on the screen, much like we do this evening, a large group of people, they can schedule, um, times outside of those office hours to have one-on-one conversations, either through the phone or through a media such as, um, Google Meet. So we do have those that we are continuing to offer. And we offered over 4,000 office hours for the month of October. Uh, we do have, uh, extensive outreach to our parents with the new addition of Parent University. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Executive Director Black to talk a little bit about Parent University and Connect With Kids.
Thank you, Jessica. Um, good evening. Uh, Parent University, of course, is, um, was launched a couple of months ago, uh, to engage our parents, especially during, uh, this time, uh, these times, unfortunate times. Um, it is, this month alone, we've hosted a series of sessions by grade level, uh, explaining A-Day, asynchronous day, what it means and how parents can best utilize A-Day with their student. Um, yesterday, the number is quite low. Um, we are hoping to, um, increase that number. Uh, we went from, um, a very high number last month to, um, a low, a number this month. I don't, I expect for it to fluctuate at times. Um, but, uh, all of our sessions are recorded so parents can go back and look at those, um, sessions, um, at their leisure. Yesterday, we did a session on restorative justice and kind of gave a, um, an overview as to what that was or is. And then on next Tuesday, November 17th, we will also have another session on CRP BIS, culturally responsive, positive behavior intervention and supports. Um, and how it relates to responding, uh, to undesired behavior. Um, in regards to Connect With Kids, it is our custom, uh, web-based social emotional learning platform. Um, and it's available to all staff, students, and, uh, parents. Um, to increase the number, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. To increase the, the interest, rather, uh, we've started school-level training and professional development on how to utilize this program, um, in helping staff become more familiar and comfortable with Connect With Kids. Thank you.
Wonderful. Um, I would like to break down on the next slide, I'm going to turn it back over to Cordelia to talk a little bit about our nurse contacts. Um, as you know, uh, nurses are a very important part or fabric of the Lansing School District. We're very lucky to have several nurses on staff. And this contacts made number that you see here, the 8,000, that does not even include our nurse contacts. I'm going to turn it over to Cordelia to talk to you a little about our nurses and all of the opportunities that they, uh, participate in throughout the month of October.
Thanks again, Jessica. So our nurse contacts totaled, uh, for the month of October, um, 758. This includes phone calls, text messages, and emails. Uh, in most cases, these, uh, contacts are regarding immunizations, which was a, a big part of, uh, the number, 758, as we were trying to, uh, get parents, um, connected, uh, with either their physician or, um, join our, um, drive-through immunization clinic that was held in September. Um, also, coordinating doctor's appointments, retrieving documentation and other kinds of health-related forms, uh, from physicians, um, assisting families with community resources for, uh, food and utilities and other kinds of, um, reasons why they would, uh, require a community resource. Um, some of the other things that our nurses are involved in, the list is, uh, very long. So I'll just highlight just a couple of things. Um, is the NASA webinar. Um, the focus of, of that webinar was chronic health condition considerations, uh, regarding school reopening. And so I think that this, uh, this, um, session was very important as we, uh, continue to work on, uh, how we will be, uh, coming back to school, whether that's face-to-face or continuing, uh, with screen to screen. As well as, uh, our COVID-19 webinar hosted by the Michigan Association by, uh, school nurses. And so I think, uh, too, being able to, uh, attend these kinds of webinars really put us in a position where we have an in-house expert on, um, how we move forward with bringing students back, uh, to school face-to-face. Uh, you will hear from our nurses next week, or excuse me, yes, next week, as they will, I'm sorry, the 19th, yes, next week, um, as they will provide us an update on the status of COVID and various other topics, um, regarding, um, how families and, and staff can move forward with, um, being safe. And, uh, yeah, just staying safe around this, this difficult time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Another part that is really integral to our screen-to-screen learning, of course, is technology. Can't do our screen-to-screen learning without it. And so we'll have a report here on technology moving forward. For hotspots, which is our main way for families to, uh, connect, um, that's provided by the school district, we passed out 72 in the month of October, hotspots to staff, and 158, uh, um, hotspots to students. We've given out 228 devices in the month of October. And those devices may be to students who are new enrollees to the Lansing School District, or also students who, uh, may have come upon a device at their home that they were normally using, that has now become rely, unreliable, and they do need one from the Lansing School District. So we are continuing, um, to pass out devices as needed to our families to make sure that they are connected. We still are utilizing our work order system. And so in the month of October, we had 118 work orders passed through the technology department, um, to help to get resolved, and also 916 student-related work orders. So that way, the, the, uh, technology department can be very responsive to staff and student needs. One of the additions to the technology department that was started in, um, late September, early October, was our onsite clinic, clinic visits. Those visits happen at the Hill Center. And in the Hill Center, we have, um, every day of the week, we have a different time to accommodate families, uh, changing schedules. So there's some in the morning, some after five o'clock, so that all of our families can be serviced at any point during the week. And those onsite clinic visits have, um, staff that can switch out devices if there's something technologically wrong, um, help solve any types of problems that you may have. We even have a retired principal, um, who's working with us, Becky Stevens, who is also helping connect families academically with Google Classroom. So it's kind of a one-stop, um, help service for our families to be able to, um, make sure that they are connected and ready to learn every single day. In our communications department, uh, we had seven phone messages that went out this month, which, uh, totals 80,000 emails, texts, and calls, once you total it up for the Lansing School District. Um, as many of you may know, we have a Facebook page. Uh, it's a very active Facebook page. We have 37, uh, Facebook posts for the month of October. And I have to say, I personally really enjoy the Facebook page. Some of those Facebook posts have included our senior spotlight, which is a real highlight for me to be able to see, especially this past week, um, as a former principal of Sheridan Road STEM, I got to see some of my former students who are now, uh, graduates or will be graduates, and to see them all grown up and ready to move on into the real world at the following year. So I highly encourage all of you out there, if you've not, uh, subscribed to do so, we have added 54 subscribers this month. So people are finding value in, um, participating in our Facebook page. We had over 10,000 likes, shares, and comments, and a whopping 74,000 posts that have been seen. So it's nice to be able to see that we're spreading the word about the Lansing School District and all the wonderful positive things and students that we have to showcase here. I'm going to move on here to our, um, contingency of learning plans and adaptive measures for special education. And I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Diaz to discuss the contents of this slide.
Thank you, Ms. Benavides, and good evening, everyone. Um, I am happy to report that we have completed 92% of our contingency learning plans. And what that means is that we have completed 1,767 students' contingency plans, which may consist of multiple plans, uh, attached to their IEPs. So a student may have a contingency plan tied to, uh, speech or social work services. And you can think of a contingency learning plan kind of like a behavior plan or an accommodation. So those live within the IEP of each student. The IEPs would be implemented, um, at all costs. And if we would get to a position where we wouldn't be able to implement a piece of that IEP, that's then where the contingency learning plan would come into play. So our staff have been working diligently to complete those CLPs. Um, a very important piece of those completions is including the parents in the conversation around those completions. Although it is not a requirement for parents to be involved, that is something that our special education department has worked very hard to do so that it's a collaborative effort and not simply our special education providers putting those CLPs together in isolation. Some of the adaptive measures that you specifically asked about, um, a couple of meetings ago, wanting to know kind of what things were our special education support service staff doing to support our students with IEPs or 504s in this new virtual environment. So some of the things that they're doing, um, are listed here on this screen. So really trying to help set expectations for students in this new learning environment. What does it mean to be a student in an online learning environment? Celebrating successes. So helping students see their achievements and the ways that they are learning and growing in this environment. And sometimes that can be hard for them to kind of see the connections. Um, they're also supporting students in terms of reinforcing deadlines and other classroom expectations. So just like if we were face-to-face, each classroom teacher has a different set of rules and expectations within their classroom. And so it's no different in this virtual environment. So really trying to help students navigate those differences across the classrooms. Um, excuse me, our special education staff are also supporting students by helping them learn how to advocate for themselves. How do I ask questions? How do I, uh, access my teacher during office hours? What kinds of questions do I need to ask so that I can understand this assignment? And what help do I need so that I can complete it in the way in which the expectation is set? Um, they are also encouraging themselves to, excuse me, encouraging our students to regulate themselves within this new routine. Um, for any and all of us, this new environment of being on Zoom is very difficult sometimes to sit still, to stay focused, to make eye contact, turn on the camera, turn off the camera, don't forget to unmute yourself. There's all these things that we're all learning in this environment. So that's a big piece of the adaptive measures that our special ed staff are, are using to support students. And a final, another way that we wanted to share is just demonstrating that students are still connected. So finding ways to reach out to students, to stay connected, to make sure that they know that we still want them to be present, we notice if they're absent, we miss them if they're not there, um, even if they're there, if we can't see their face, um, that that, that that's important to us. So staying connected with them throughout this time is also a big piece of what our special ed staff are doing. Thank you, Ms. Benavides.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Cack to talk to you about a very unique part of the Lansing School District, which are our learning labs.
Thank you, Ms. Benavides, and good evening to the Board of Education, our community, and our colleagues. By the end of October, our capacity in the learning labs was 85%. The month of November report will show an increase of students participating in the labs. And this is reflected because this week, we opened a second room at Gardner and Post Oak. Um, as a matter of fact, uh, just this week, we enrolled a family of six students into Gardner. Um, the relationship continues to grow between the teachers, the principals, and the learning lab staff. And in addition, we continue to market the program through our social media and by word of mouth from our school staff. We are very grateful to our community partners for working with us together to support our kids and families during these times. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Let's take a look at our assessment completion rates. Um, as you know, last month, we were not quite done with our, um, we hadn't quite completed our fall window. Um, this data does include the conclusion of our fall window. And we utilize Ames Web Plus as the, um, benchmark measure for our K-1 students in early numeracy and literacy. You can see our completion rates for our assessment for our K-1 students, um, is 90% and above. In NWA, those, uh, those numbers reflect our second through 12th grade students in language usage, math, and reading. And those were about in the 70% range, 70, nearly 80. Um, we do recognize that these numbers are lower than our normal standard in a face-to-face environment, but we are working hard to prepare for our winter window. Teddy Simmons, Glenn Stevens, and myself, meeting on a weekly basis to make sure that we are providing professional development for teachers and getting word out to families and staff about the upcoming winter window, which will take place in around, uh, six weeks from now. I would like to turn it over to Dr. Chapman to talk to you a little bit about EDPs and their completion.
Ms. Benavides, good evening, Board of Education, Lansing School District family. The Michigan Department of Education requires that all students enter their high school career with an educational development plan or an EDP. Thus, by statute, all students in Michigan are required to have a completed EDP by the end of their eighth grade year. However, the MPE strongly suggests that the process begin first, and the more specific recommendation is during the seventh grade year. Here in the Lansing School District, we are proud that we have an alignment known as the Lansing Pathway Promise, which we institute and activate for children as early as kindergarten. So our EDP process actually takes place kindergarten through the 12th grade, through the successful guidance of our school counselors at high school, pathway navigators, and our pathfinders through our Lansing Pathway Promise program. We are fortunate to utilize Zello, an online COPA and FERPA compliant platform that gauges student interests, yes, as early as kindergarten, and a likely career path through an interactive mechanism that actually generates an EDP. We set to have a goal of all EDPs completed by the end of first semester for this school year. At 58%, we are on target to have this completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman. All right. Um, as you know, during this time, it's important for all of us to take part in self-care. And leading the initiative around self-care for our staff has been, um, Cordelia Black and Suzie Corbin. So I'm going to turn it over to Executive Director Corbin to talk to you a little bit about staff health and wellbeing initiatives that are taking place in the Lansing School District.
Thank you, Ms. Benavides, and good evening, everyone. In October, Cordelia and I, um, implemented the district self, staff health and wellbeing, um, pro, program, excuse me. In collaboration, we, with Chuck Alberts of LSCA, Ray Fries of LASSA, and he's also the Mount Hope principal, Faith Mulner of the Office of School Culture, and Nicole Miller from SETSEG, we have an energetic group of people with the focus of working together to help people stay healthy during this time. Some of our programs that we've developed or put into place have been on themes for our professional development days. Uh, we've also, with the support of LASSA, in October, we were able to give away staff, staff prizes, if you will. Um, and LASSA has been, has generously agreed to, um, sponsor us for the, for November meeting. Uh, we plan to launch a holiday hustle after Thanksgiving. Teams will complete to help reach a district goal of a million steps before, before the end of the year, end of the calendar year. Um, more information will be forthcoming, but everyone get your walking shoes ready. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, as you know, um, with anything new, we offer changes and improvements as we're moving along. And we've offered some innovative opportunities around innovative arts and business lessons. So I'll turn it back over to Camila Diaz to talk a little bit about that.
Thank you again. Um, launching in mid-October, actually on October 19th, we started offering live lesson opportunities for our K-8 self-contained students in physical education, art, and music. And so on a rotating basis, as we did when we were live and in person, um, students have an opportunity to interact directly with their physical education teacher, their art teacher, or their music teacher to do a live lesson. Throughout the remaining time, they also have access to recorded lessons. So they can actually access art, music, and PE lessons anytime, um, through our recorded platform. But this new initiative allows them to actually interact live and in person. So as we continue to move through November and the year ahead, they will continue to grow in the opportunities that are offered for students to participate in these activities live. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, moving right along here to our attendance data. Our, our daily attendance rate for the month of October was 82%. That is up, uh, 2% from the, um, month of September. So we're really happy that we're trending in the right direction. If you take a look at the attendance data with the pie and graph charts on the left side of your screen, you'll see that our elementary attendance data has stayed very similar to what it was in the month of September with a very slight decline in our regular, uh, regularly attending. Um, I would like to point you to the chart at the bottom so that we can understand what those different and various colors mean. The tier one, or the green section of the pie, means that a student has satisfactory attendance, that they're regularly attending school and have missed either zero or up to two days of school for that entire month. Tier two, the yellow portion of the pie, means that they have moderate absenteeism, which means that they've missed just over two days or just under four days of school. And then the red tier, of course, is our most chronic absenteeism, which means that they've missed four or more days for the month of, of October. So if we take a look at our high school data, we are very excited to report that they are hair, trending up, and we have increased our regularly attending students by 12%. Uh, we are very concerned, as I'm sure all of you are, about chronic absenteeism and making sure that our students are online, are attending, are able to engage with academics, their peers, their teachers. All of that connectivity is a very important part of their day. Um, we do have an attendance initiative, and we have lots of things that we've put in place to try to combat some of that chronic absenteeism. And we have ramped up, uh, some of those initiatives during the month of October and now into the month of November. So I am going to turn it over to Cordelia Black to talk a little bit about the initiatives and ways on a day-to-day basis... So I am going to turn it over to Cordelia Black to talk a little bit about the initiatives and ways on a day-to-day basis that we try to combat our chronic absenteeism rates and get our students coming to school.
Thank you, Ms. Mrs. Benavides, um, again. Uh, so the attendance initiative, there, there is probably about anywhere from thirty-five to forty uh, individuals that have joined this task force, as we like to call it. Um, and what they typically do is, uh, review data, uh, attendance data, and that's, that's actually, a few people out of Ju- Jessica's, uh, department. Uh, we're developing professional learning around attendance and engagement. Uh, we're review, we are reviewing policy and practices, daily practices, um, and how to keep students engaged in, um, school. We are, um, very soon, we will be engaging business, um, leaders, uh, community business leaders, um, around this issue, as we know that it, it impacts everyone. Uh, we think that attendance is, is important, minutes matter, we want kids to make them count. Uh, that is our new slogan for, uh, the Lansing School District. And at the tier three, uh, level of, uh, chronic attendance, we, um, are trying to match that with, uh, tier-three interventions. And so we continue to make phone calls and home visits. Uh, public safety and student support specialists have been instrumental in making contact with parents and students. I am actually working with, um, a few community partners to assist with engaging, uh, students. Um, next week, we will begin, um, sending out what we, uh, have called, uh, nudge letters. And these are very, uh, personalized, uh, friendly messages, uh, that go out to parents about the importance of attendance and the number of absences their student have, have accumulated up to date. Um, and as a last resort, referring students to Truancy Core, but we're trying to do our very best uh, to, um, not go there, not use that, that option. Um, and we want to make sure that we've exhausted all other, uh, interventions before, um, obviously, uh, implementing that, um, intervention. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, as all of you know, we do use Google Classroom as our, our main platform here in the Lansing School District. And during the month of October, um, our teachers have put two hundred thou- two hundred, three thousand, um, assignments online for our students. While that might seem like a lot, that is actually about one assignment per day, per teacher, for each of their students. So we really feel like that's an appropriate number for students to be able to manage. And of course, there's other ways to, um, have assignments other than putting them on Google Classroom. But our teachers are very actively on Google Classroom and utilizing that platform, uh, to the best of their ability. So we're really proud of that because this is not a platform that teachers have used, uh, prior to the Lansing School District, at least widespread. So we're really proud of the fact that they've embraced this and are doing a wonderful job because we know that's been, uh, very difficult. And they've taken on that task and done an excellent job. Um, I'd like to pause here. I know we do have a couple of slides talking about moving into the second marking period. But I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Sinocropi for some direction if we'd like to continue or pause here for questions and comments.
I probably should unmute myself. I said it really well before. We'll continue with the slides and then the board can ask questions over, over the whole, uh, the whole thing when we're done.
Okay, wonderful.
Okay.
I will move on to the next slide and turn it over to you.
Elsa, I think it's you.
Thank you, Superintendent Sinocropi. Good evening again. Um, about a month ago, we were in the midterm of the first marking period of our screen-to-screen initiative, our remote learning. And there were questions, um, concerns, and just some changes that we felt that we needed to put in place. And we definitely wanted to answer the call of our families, our staff members, as well as the recommendation from the Board of Education to take a close look at screen time and other factors that were associated with our screen-to-screen initiative. So what you have before you at this time is, uh, what we're calling our second marking period reset. We have a lot of moving pieces, and so, um, by symbolism, we're choosing to show you how those pieces are all fitting together in the best interest of our staff, but more so, our students and their families. With these adaptations, we will continue with live instruction on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. We have, however, reorganized the day. Live or synchronous instruction will occur primarily in the morning session of class. The afternoon will be very specific to asynchronous or independent learning, wherein which it can be driven by parent or caregiver along with choices made by our students or our learners. One of the main concerns that we needed to take a very close look at is to have universal or common times, especially since we were providing the exact same instruction by satellite or by our learning labs. And that was a primary request of our community partners in the learning labs. In order to best service the students to have a complete, smooth time during the learning lab session, we needed to reorganize or institute a common lunch period for students in grades K through eight. And so many may ask, what happens on Wednesday? Wednesday is one hundred percent asynchronous, or what we call A-Day. And Superintendent Sinocropi, um, is going to share with us the very specifics of what occurs on A-Day.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman. Um, yesterday was our first A-Day, and, uh, we, uh, we all made it through it. We, and as we've talked before, we're going to be making adjustments as we go along. We don't have another A-Day now due to P D days and Thanksgiving until December second. So, uh, uh, anyway, we do have it clearly defined, and I'm not going to read all this to you, but we want everyone to understand that it is a workday, and these are the things, there are some certain things that should occur on those days. There will also be a half-day once a month, and I'm really excited about this. So our administrators, um, can, oh, I'm sorry, I got the wrong one. Yeah, no, it's not. A half-day once a month so administrators can get together and do some professional development for, for that particular group. Also, uh, there's a two-hour block for teachers to collaborate at grade levels in the afternoon, or it could be subject matter, it could be, uh, special education staff, and, you know, there's lots of different, lots of different options. But we feel it's very important for teachers to get, to get together and talk about professional practice and other issues that may come up. Uh, one hour each day is the first thing, the first hour in the morning is set aside for our school leaders to provide professional learning. Uh, it could be even part of a, what we were used to call a staff meeting. It just would depend on what subject or what was, what was available or what was important to, for that particular school building. Um, we learn Wednesdays, our A.M. and P.M. sessions that are offered, they're optional and required. Uh, they cover a lot of different topics, and you can see those topics there, where many of those deal with some of the technology that we have right now and other things. We also, as, uh, Elsa said earlier, these are, this is care group, caregiver, and parent-driven. Um, so we want to be able to have parents sort of fashion whatever it is their students need, uh, on those days. So it could be, uh, we have virtual field trips that are available. You know, we have some stuff, I think we talked about last time, that Eversol Center has put together. Families could go to the park or go to, go to the zoo. They also could work on assignments that day that need to be worked on or work on projects and just do general catch-up. And lastly, and we talked about it before, it was the parent-university courses are certainly going to be available. And if, uh, parents could view those, those courses on that day, or, you know, they can, uh, they can do whatever is best for their child. I also wanted to, uh, talk about two other things that, uh, that kind of came up during, uh, the other, uh, presentations. We have a committee that we've been, been together about a month now. It's called Beyond Screen-to-Screen. And we are going to be doing a presentation from that committee and where we're at and the progress we've made. And that, that presentation will be at the next I S S meeting, which is on December tenth. So there'll be lots of time for us to, uh, we can gather things together, and we'll be able to answer lots of questions and sort of, sort of a report back to the community. And one of those things that, one of the things that will happen between now and then, we're, we are getting ready for, uh, for lack of a better term, a, a parent and family survey on what, what might need to happen, um, as we move forward into the, as towards the end of the first semester and what happens after that. And I also want to mention one thing about the nurses, and, uh, Ms. Black talked about that a little bit, but I'll do. The nurses, uh, led by Sue Wheeler, will be coming once a month to discuss what's going on and, and in the health world and how we're doing with our, uh, whatever our protocols are going to be for cleaning and sanitizing buildings, um, and, and just doing the valuable things that they continue to do. So we're much appreciative of that. Lastly, uh, we, this is, uh, the first time that we, that we put together something like this, where we all get to talk. So I thought it was important, we all thought it was important, you get to hear from everybody. But this doesn't happen without Jessica Benavides. And so I will give her, uh, big props for putting this together, although a lot of the data and stuff came from various places. So we appreciate everybody that took care of this today. So, uh, President Lawrence, this concludes our presentation, but we'll, we're open to any questions that anyone might have.
Willis.
Thank you. I appreciate you, I appreciate the presentation and all the work that went into the presentation. Mrs. Sinocropi, I'm not sure if the script was already in place before I sent my email, but a lot of the questions I said I was going to, to jump on were addressed. So that only leaves me with just a couple of questions. Um, so our enrollment is down, um, from what it was in September. And I was just curious if we knew, um, if we knew what was the difference between September and October? If some of that was just mostly cleanup or?
It's mo- mostly, it's mostly cleanup, but, you know, there's an interesting, there's an interesting thing that's going to happen with enrollment and how we receive our money this year. And, and because, as we've talked about before, it's, it's four different percentages that are worked in right now. And, um, so with all that, it's, it is down, but it, I, I would suspect it'll be down the next time we show it to you. Just because we're, we're, we're working, as we talked about earlier, Cordelia talked about, we're trying to, you know, find students and get them here and their attendance and all those kinds of things. So it's all, it's all wrapped together. And the difficulty, and I'm just, this is sort of an editorial comment right now. The difficulty in this is that this type of learning is very difficult for some, to some of our students and families. And so we've got to kind of balance that. We're almost at the point, if you took, put too much pressure on them, we may never see them again. So, so we've got to work, we've got to work on that. And, and we are, we're looking at how, ways to do that, but, uh, I, I don't have a great answer for you other than that right now.
Sure, and as I wrote out my questions, I realize I, I want to be mindful of the fact that we're at eighty-two percent attendance during a pandemic, during all of this crisis, and when this isn't happening, we're at ninety percent. So we're talking about an eight percent difference. So I, I don't want to minimize that we're, we're missing kids, but I do want to recognize that to be at eighty-two percent is a Herculean effort. But because we want all of our kids to matter, and we do know that, you know, we want to know where the other eight percent are. So I, I just wanted to, to ask out of concern, but not to, uh, be able to recognize the amount of work that's going into to get us where we are. So, so please hear me in that question. Um, but that does lead into my next question, which is the assessment data. The completion rate, is that based on attendance or enrollment?
I am going to turn that over to Jessica. Would it be you for this one? Okay.
It is based on enrollment. So we did take out our students that, um, we would consider, we call them no-shows, so students that we hadn't seen from that day until the end of the window, we did remove from that data. However, I will tell you that we do have several students in that, um, in that grouping that would fall into that chronic absenteeism. And, um, I will have to tell you that I, I really appreciate the fact that you called it a Herculean effort because it absolutely is. And I have to say that our schools have been very diligent to not just drop students that they haven't seen in a while, right? Um, and I'm really proud of that fact because our due diligence, um, protocol tells us after ten days, no-show, call, home visit, if we haven't seen the students, we would normally in a face-to-face year, drop those students off of our enrollment, uh, books, so to speak. That doesn't mean they can't re-enroll or, or come back to us, but that is the due diligence, due diligence process. I do know this year that we have extended that time period. Uh, principals have been very diligent to keep calling, keep showing up, um, sending emails, sending letters, lots of different things that they've done during that time. And though, yes, that does reflect our attendant, or excuse me, our attendance and not our enrollment, you are seeing some of the chronic in attendance for secondary, especially showing up in those completion, um, uh, rates for N W B A.
Okay, thank you. That, that's helpful. Do we know some examples of reasons why the, where the numbers are low? Is it, is it the absent students, or are there other reasons why the assessments are not being?
I would say it's a combination of things. So I do think some of it is our chronic, if you're missing school, then you're missing the days of assessment. Um, but I also know that in this digital world, um, in a regular classroom, if you come to school and you're doing an assessment and it's in the gym, or it's in your classroom, and you sit down and your teacher says, okay, we're going to work on an assessment, then you work on the assessment. We have had lots of, um, experiences where, uh, students hear, oh, we're going to work on an assessment today, and they do log off their computers. And so, um, you know, assessment is not the most exciting thing. I'm sure all of us have taken tests in our, our previous lives as students. And so that has been difficulty because we do, they call this the engagement report. And as we know, assessment is not the most engaging thing for students to participate in. So we've tried to find clever ways to pair that with different, um, you know, more exciting things. But I do know that that has played a part in, uh, the feedback that we've gotten from principals.
Okay, thank you, and I, and I think that's definitely a fair point about engagement. Um, working from home is difficult, and I'm paid to log onto my computer for hours a day, and even then I went to log off. So I can appreciate that. Um, and my final question goes to, um, the adaptive measures for students with I E Ps. Dr. Diaz, I appreciate the detailed, um, report there. But could you give us an example? So you said we demonstrate that students are still connected to us, wanting them to, to stay engaged, remind them that we want them to engage. Can you give us an example of what that looks like, what are our teachers doing to help our students stay engaged?
Um, certainly. Thank you for the question. I think probably one of the biggest things that they're doing is making personal connections. So reaching out by phone just to talk to students or, um, setting up an opportunity for them to connect during office hours, which would just be one-on-one, so that they feel that they're safe. You know, sometimes turning on their, uh, camera is difficult. They may not feel comfortable with their themselves, sharing themselves, or sharing their environment. And so sometimes it's easier to kind of stay disengaged and disconnected when they're in the larger classroom. So those just very personal reach-outs, trying to mirror as closely as possible the types of connections that they would make with students if they were face-to-face, where they would just pop into a classroom or see them in the hallway and maybe pull them into their office or classroom for a few minutes to just check in and, and touch base. So really trying to do those very individualized, one-on-one connections with students, um, to see how they can be supportive.
Okay, thank you. That helps. Okay, that concludes my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Willis. I'm going to go to Mrs. Lilge, and then Dr. Beverly, and then Dr. Burrows. So Missy, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just want to echo again the recognition- Okay. Thank you. Um, I just want to echo again the recognition of the Herculean efforts. I just can't believe where, I just had conferences with my own kids tonight and last night. And just to, to have something to review, a whole marking period to review, and they're still learning and in the middle of all this. It's just incredible that they've had consistent learning happening. And I really don't even understand how you made all of this possible for us, but thank you. So I have some, some points of just, you know, things I want to share that I've been hearing from the teachers that I know and the, you know, the other families that I'm connected with. And then I have three questions. So first, um, the new schedule, uh, it seemed like a really quick turnaround and it was, it felt a little jarring and abrupt for, I think, um, some families and, and some students after they had kind of gotten into the swing of things. I heard from many teachers that they didn't have a chance, they didn't have a chance to think about it or strategize about it or prepare their students very well for that fast turnaround. I understand like we are all flying by the seat of our pants and I'm not, this is not a criticism. It's just, I feel it's important for me to share when I hear these things as they come, as they come to me. That being said, the new schedule, the making everything coordinated across schools, that makes perfect sense. And, um, you know, I think it was the right move for sure. And we appreciate A-Day. I think, um, many families are just like really happy to have a chance to catch up on their assignments, mine included. I think that the teachers I've talked to, they were kind of like, what are we supposed to do? Oh, okay. You know, after the first A-Day and they had a chance to have some professional development about it, they're like, oh, this will be better for everybody. So we really appreciate that. Thank you. And I love being able to tell people that are complaining about too much screen time that we just reduced it by 20%. So thank you so much for that. Let's see, um, the teacher get-togethers, uh, have been, from every teacher that I know, um, ha- have been super positive. They've really, really appreciated that time to create space, um, to talk to each other, to share ideas, to vent, to, you know, it's been really healthy thing. And I'm still hearing lots and lots of appreciation for being able to work virtually, but not just because we're in the middle of COVID, but there's all kinds of, um, advantages to that, just being at home, cutting down commute times. The fact that, that they're forced to have more individual family communications. I'm seeing and hearing that a lot of teachers really felt like in the past, this, this conference week was the first time that they had ever met or talked to any of the parents. And the fact that they were forced to really get those communications happening upfront made, made even conferences feel so much better. It was like a reconnection instead of an introduction. And, um, they, it gave them a chance to really be working as a team from day one. And, you know, like we had in our house, one of our kids didn't feel well one day. And so that was still no problem. She didn't miss any schoolwork. She was, you know, she was able to log in from her bed and still participate. And so those are all like wonderful things about virtual school. And I just hope that, um, maybe we can continue that as an option even after the whole health crisis is over. Okay. Now onto my three questions. So the half-day once a month for the PD for the, um, administrators, is that already built into the schedule or is that something new?
It's, go ahead, Delsa.
Thank you, Superintendent Sinicropi. It, it's actually built in and we'll be able to capitalize on that, Ms. Lilge, through our A-Day. Yep. So it will be synced right in with A-Day.
Okay. Super. Thank you. And then, um, are, are they continuing to do like the Ames Web and NWVA in November? Will they release more assessment information coming in November?
So, uh, all parents will receive emails in the coming weeks, uh, regarding their Ames Web and NWVA reports for their students. Those will come through by email. Teddy Simmons and Kurt Barnham have been working to pull those together along with Glenn Stevens to make sure that they're formatted correctly and we can make it out to, to all of our families that way. Cause we've not really had to do it that way. So it's, everything's been a little bit of a challenge where we would normally print our PDF copies and hand them to parents during conferences. We've now had to find a way to, uh, do that digitally. But there will not be any testing in the month of November or December for our students. The winter window will open in January.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then, um, I'm just curious to hear, maybe you can't say, but just talk of the future. You know, what are you thinking at the end of, I mean, in my mind, I feel like we could do this all year. I just am curious what, what you're thinking.
I'll handle this one.
Again, I understand if you can say that.
I think that, that one of the things that part of our, uh, Beyond Screen to Screen Committee is looking at what those options would be, uh, at the end of the first semester. But keep in mind, if we're going to make some changes by the, the end of the first semester, we got to start thinking about what that looks like a month ahead of time in terms of planning it out. I think, uh, in, I, I think in my mind, we have to pay very close attention to what's happening, not only uh, in the world, but what's happening in the Lansing and County area in terms of, uh, cases and tests, positive tests and all those things like that. We are going to ask some parents down the road about what their, what their, uh, what their choices would be to, for the second semester in terms of how they want their children educated. I, I really don't want to speculate right now on what that, what the parents might say and what, what, what the end of January will look like compared to what it looks like right now. So what we've been, we've, we talked about it today, as a matter of fact, about what things look like and where we would go. That's about as vague an answer as I can give you.
I, I'm okay with that answer.
Mrs. Lilge, is that all your questions?
That's it. Thank you.
Dr. Beverly.
Hey, Eddie, how are you, buddy?
Yeah.
Thank you. Echo, um, everyone's earlier gratitude for the presentation. I know the heavy lift that goes, um, with that in terms of crunching numbers and, um, getting input, uh, from across, uh, all of the district departments, um, into a very comprehensive presentation. So thank you all. A couple of questions here. The first one, uh, thinking about parent university. Could you just, um, share, uh, with, with, with our, with our, um, public here on, how you go about developing content, um, and making sure that it continues to be, uh, developed and customized with a emphasis on relevancy, um, uh, and making sure that, uh, it, it is, um, attuned to the needs of parents?
Yep. Um, sure. Um, thank you, Dr. Beverly. Initially, being that this is our first year, we kind of went off of past, uh, requests. And, uh, um, information that we had collected previously around topics that parents, um, required information about. And then also, uh, topics that we thought would be relevant, uh, for parents to, to know about that, uh, I don't, we did not believe we spoke enough about, right? And that being such as CRP BIS. What is CRP BIS? Many parents, we all know what that means, but many parents don't know what that means. Uh, and how it relates to, um, uh, multi-tiered interventions, right? So we just kind of want to start educating our parents around, um, how we practice, um, and how we function uh, around interventions. And, and so, um, you know, that's, that's pretty much how we came up with, um, the first, uh, round of, uh, of, uh, lessons. Now, moving forward, we are, um, surveying, uh, the, our parents, um, on how they, uh, what they liked about the session, um, how they, how they rated the session, was the content relevant? What they like more of it, less of it? And then also, um, what other topics they want to, um, hear about. And so we'll take that information, um, and use it to move forward with, uh, providing additional, uh, parent university sessions. And that, and, and, and one more thing in regards to the content, we work with the facilitator on developing the content.
Great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
My next question is about Learning Labs. Brett Kacinski from Lansing Parks and Recreation reached out to me early last week. They were interested in partnering, partnering with MSU's College of Education in terms of expanding, uh, their learning lab options across the city. I'm opening up more community centers, but needing, uh, more, um, instructors to, uh, to, to lead learning in that, those spaces. So was able to connect, um, him with some folks, uh, in the College of Ed who, um, are more attuned to the teacher prep side. But it kind of begs more of a question about how are we supporting our partners, um, in order to better support us?
Thank you, Beverly. Um, we're in constant communication with the Learning Labs. We have, um, the teachers that have built a strong relationship with the staff members at the labs. So when they have a question or they're not sure how to help the kid, they email each other, they communicate each other. We have, um, social workers that have been connecting with the kids at the labs and talking to the staff and the kids. So we continue to grow and learning how to educate these kids with the variable that they're not teachers, you know? And, uh, hearing you said that, uh, there might be an opportunity to do some partnership with MSU and students and, and people in the educational field is always an asset. Overall, they, they are improving and they're increasing the way that our kids are staying connected and learning. And, um, they're excited about the Wednesdays. They feel that a lot of the kids need to do some catching up. So that's a good thing. Uh, the, the Learning Labs are learning to, to measure and assess if our kids are staying on task, if our kids are falling behind, if our kids need extra help. And all that is a process of growing that we are seeing as the months go by. And I'm sure by the time this pandemic is completed and, uh, we and our partners go apart from each other, we will have learned a lot that we would be able to use in the future for, um, after-school programs or for community, uh, programming in our, in our community. I hope that answered your question.
It did. Thank you.
You're welcome.
My final question is, um, regarding the live, uh, lessons. I, I did a, uh, earlier, um, this week, I did a, uh, an informal, um, survey of, my closest constituent, um, regarding some of those programming, um, regarding, uh, art, gym and, uh, and music. She was, you know, saddened that, uh, that, uh, gym and, and art were not currently available to her. She said that, uh, music was a challenge because flip grid is not working on, on her device. And, you know, we'll, we'll address that. But I'm just curious as to what other feedback we've, we've received thus far on, um, those live lessons.
Thank you for the question, Dr. Beverly. In terms of direct feedback to me, I have not had any direct feedback yet. I think that this is something that we're going to continue to work on, growing and expanding. One of the things that I think is difficult for, for our students, um, to kind of remember or understand is that even when we were face-to-face, they did not have live PE lessons with a PE teacher. Every week, um, it was on a rotating schedule. We have three PE teachers to serve all of our K-8 self-contained elementary schools. And so they have a rotating schedule. So they only get a live lesson once every six weeks, maybe. Uh, we have more art teachers, so they get an, a live art lesson more frequently than that. We're actually working, um, to provide some upgraded equipment to our art teachers, um, so that they will be able to provide better live instruction as well as recordings. Adding some document cameras and possibly some other technology tools, uh, to help them be able to do some broader types of activities with the students. It's for a teacher to be teaching live lessons and then also to be recording lessons so that there are lessons accessible on a daily basis for, for their subject area. That's a lot to ask for a teacher. So our art, music and PE teachers are actually spending half of their day creating these video recorded lessons that students can access at any time while they're not in the live rotation. But they're also then half the day teaching live lessons to students across the district on this rotation. So I think, um, it's another piece that's going to be kind of a growing, have some growing pains with it. I know that music initially, we weren't thinking we were going to be able to do much live at all. And the music teachers kind of said, we're going to figure this out. We're, we're going to find ways to, to connect with our kids face-to-face, um, you know, screen-to-screen, live. And, um, so they've started trying some different things. But as you mentioned, we know we're going to have technological bumps in the road, um, as they kind of move forward. But in terms of negative feedback, um, or positive feedback, I haven't really had any of either directly.
Thank you for that, I could, yeah. I would just encourage that we do, um, seek some input on, on those programming. You know, thinking about, um, you know, if we were to extend, um, you know, virtual learning, uh, into the next calendar year and beyond, um, we, we need to get that part right. Because, uh, those specific programs are, um, some of the most important aspects of, of learning for a lot of our students. They build a lot of connections to, uh, to their school and to the district through those specific programs. And so I, I would like to see us, um, uh, kind of double down on, on making sure that we're getting that right. So thank you. That concludes my question, my question.
I believe, uh, Dr. Burrows is up now.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry. I had to get rid of Betty. Uh, Dr. Burrows, please go ahead.
I, I'm dealing with a rogue cat in my office, too. It's gonna happen. So I have a couple of, um, fairly specific questions about the attendance. I do want to start, I want to reiterate what some of my colleagues have said. I, I think it's very easy to take for granted, um, how amazing it is that we're getting over 80% attendance. The online learning, um, in isolation, I'm actually not a fan of it as a, as a way of delivering instructional material. We're in this situation because of the pandemic and the fact that we are maintaining the level of, of engagement that we are, I think is very impressive. And, um, the district is to be, is to be commended for, for that as an achievement. So I just want to start with that. So some questions I have about the attendance data. So one is, are the same children in the high absenteeism category from month to month? Or is there some churn within that? Do we have a sense of that?
Not specifically. Um, yes, there are, there are, it's both, right? Both and. We do have some that have gone from the September to the October data. And we do have some that have, um, started the year without, uh, attending and now are currently attending. So I think it's a little bit of both, but we are just aggregating this data in a lot of different ways to try to tackle it from a lot of different angles, right? So we're looking at it from the school lens, the teacher lens, you know, are there pockets that are really have high, uh, attendance? And what's the reason there? So we are trying to dissect it the best that we can. Um, and those are some excellent questions that I'd be happy to dive, uh, deeper into for sure.
And the, I, I guess the other thing that I'd like to ask, if you, I'm sure you have this data. But if, particularly if there's differences by subject matter in high school. Are there certain subjects that we're losing a lot of kids? A lot of my previous research has been in math education. You can guess what I, you, you probably guess what I'm thinking is probably a problem area in terms of attendance. So that's just some. In terms of attendance. Um, so that's just something else I'd be interested in 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 hearing about. Um, so this is because I don't remember what our trends have been. I know attendance tends to fluctuate quite a bit during the year. Does the, is the level of attendance now during the pandemic in terms of the change from month to month? Is it different than what we've seen when we've been in regular in-person instruction? So do we usually see a bit of a dip at K eight in the first? You know, month, or is it usually flat? I just don't have a sense of what's what's normal.
Another great question.
Okay.
Trend data, yes. Um, I would love to compare the two, um, just to see what is trending. You know, we did the comparison from last month to this month, um, but we did not do the um. Twenty nineteen data to uh for this month's data, so I will definitely add that back in.
Okay, um, so stepping away from strictly attendance issues, um. Have we heard anything about remaining access issues um with parents or teachers? Whether that's devices or with in with internet broadband access?
So as we have heard about those, we have provided hotspots where um when those are available. In fact. I'm CC'd on all those emails that go to uh Jeff Vanderland, and so on a daily basis, I will, I get emails so I can share a little an anecdotaly with you. Around um teachers who uh will get a call from the principal and say, can Mrs. So-and-so come and pick up a hotspot or can I pick up one for her? There's something going on with your internet at home. And so um the nice part about that is we do have a stock of those um hotspots right there at the technology department. So if they call us, they can pick it up that day uh before the end of the day. So those are the the anecdotal kind of um stories that I'm privy to just because of the emails. But I'm really happy to say that the turnaround time is just about as long as your car drive from where you are to the to to the whole technology center.
Okay, great. Um, so uh uh this is a technical question related to A-Day. Um, so the the childcare um state subsidy. There's been a change in in regulations for the for the remainder of the year. So that childcare providers can um can be billed for authorized hours. For children who are school-aged, right, at at home, but are participating in school activities. And I just want to make sure that the A-Day, because there is all asynchronous contact, isn't gonna, it's not gonna cost some parents. Some of their childcare subsidy money, and I just wasn't sure whether that had been cleared up with MDE yet. Or whether we're safe.
So I can speak a little bit to that, um Superintendent Sinicropi, if you would like.
Okay, go ahead.
As part of our um. Um, um, what do I want to call it? As part of our regular screen-to-screen learning. We can count asynchronous and synchronous time as both learning times because we are offering those opportunities. And so because we don't have to count minutes like we have traditionally in a face-to-face setting. As long as we are providing the content based on the standards, those are considered learning days for students, though they are asynchronous. Our students would be completing assignments from the regular school week, and we also have optional educational activities during that time. So it's not actually, even though it's an asynchronous day, it's not a day off from school. It's just a different type of learning during that day.
Okay, um, and I can imagine that that's something that either childcare providers or parents. Who are receiving the subsidy might be curious about. I don't know whether you feel at any of those questions, but that just occurred to me when I saw that. Uh, my last question um relates to black screens. Uh, I'm in a lot of Zoom meetings. Um, and sometimes particularly when you're having, you know, shared screens and people are showing. Uh, a a presentation, it makes a lot of sense to do a black screen. I'm curious, though, because. You know, my my wife's teaching a university class right now. There's a concern sometimes that that. Teachers at any level feel like they're talking to a bunch of blank boxes, and a lot of times there's a suspicion that the kids are checking in. And then never, never engaging again. Um, I just want to know. Is this something that's been bubbling up for the from the from the from the teachers? Are we getting some feedback about this? Is this a concern? Because anecdotally, it seems like a potential issue where people are attending, but they're extremely checked out.
Feel attacked, Nathan, I feel attacked.
Uh, Delsa or Dr. Chapman?
Sure, um, thanks for that question, um, Dr. Burrows. Um, we do have, um. We have a mechanism in place where teachers, you know, have been asked. In terms of those first few weeks of school and building relationships. We well know who is on the black screen and possibly are not fully engaged. So through our means of um attendance and recording that with exit tickets. We attempt to have activities that are engaging for the student where they are going to be engaged and present and on screen. For that entire time. We also have become very cognizant through reports from our student support specialists. And from our administrators through their teachers, that there are just some students and their families who. And with reason are really struggling with the pandemic, and so they don't necessarily want to fully open. Um, their their lives, if you will, um, by having that black screen. A sense of privacy. And so what we've asked is that our teachers. Be very cognizant and and reach out to the student, um, offer an opportunity for the student and the parent to be a part of. Um, a time during office hours, just to do a check-in, just to make sure that that engagement. Um, is there, and if it's not, how can we support um through a tier-two or if necessary, a tier-three intervention?
So I I think that's great, and I think if if there's some best practices that the school district is identifying on this. Um, not only does it need to be disseminated within the school district, but I actually think it should be disseminated more widely, both in K-12. And the at the university level, because this is something that is a is a is it's a definitely a a growing concern among a lot of educators.
Right.
So um I think this is part of a broader conversation that that probably needs to happen. Um, but those are all my questions, and thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just a couple of questions and observations. On the uh acron- acronimos day, something to that effect. Um, so kids, will be completing assignments. Aren't they gonna be on the computer as well? And how does that minimize the the screen time?
Let let me take a shot at that one, just for.
Okay.
It this is how, this is how I, this is how I look at that. It, yeah, it admit, it still is going to minimize screen time because. There is uh, there are other options. It doesn't mean that they're going to be in a class all day. So asynchronous could be uh a video. It could be a walk in the park, as I said. It could be. Uh, a phys ed lesson that we ask them to do activities. So what we're trying to do is ease. Uh, and we we heard it, and we heard it at board, the board meeting from a couple of uh public comments, and we've, we we were well aware of. We need to try to ease the burden a little bit. So. I think that if you ask me, I think that I, among others, I'm on the screen too much. I'd like to have an asynchronous day where I could. Can I do that, uh, President Lawrence? Every Wednesday, can I just go wand- wander around? Okay, thanks. No, but seriously, it it. We're trying to make it so it's it's simpler for parents and caregivers as uh Dr. Chapman stated in terms of. Uh, always having to be right there. Uh, kids are probably going to be on a screen doing something. Anyway, you know.
Right.
Um, so we're trying, uh, I'll, I'll stop babbling. Uh, Dr. Chapman, anything you want to add to that?
Sure, um, what we're seeing in this, um, in this age in particular, that our students. Um, President Lawrence probably knows, her little ones are probably very acclimated to techie-type things, and so. It's natural instinct for our students to, they may not want to see the teacher live. However, every student, every school received a schedule. And I really like how our teachers and our principals work together. They are making A-Day so inviting. Um, through what we call or through a research researchers calling gamify activities. So. If it's more like a game, it's engaging. Also, another phenomenon that's on the rise right now is when we can storeify. If there is something where the student um can involve themselves and look for um interaction. Where they, there is a likely outcome where they can um project or know the probability of it happening. Many of our enrichment online programs, they are set up through either that gaming or gamify mode or the storeify. And that's really helping our students. Also, many of those online supplemental or enrichment programs. Give automatic instant feedback. Um, for example, practice multiplication facts through extra math. The students get into a regimen of their own drill and skill, if you will. So, um, it's a relaxed day. But it's also, as stated earlier, it's not a day off, and we really believe that this is going to be an opportunity for the student. Um, who may not have done so well this first marking period, they'll be able to capitalize on catching up. And going a little bit deeper um through independent learning for second semester, second marking period and beyond.
Thank you. Uh, my second question is in terms of um all the contexts that have been made with a. With a home of folks who are not attending school. Um, have we found out uh things like uh parent preparation? Or ability to help their kids stay focused? Um, and have, has there been anything we've learned and that we might do for parents to help them? Help their kids stay focused and maybe not not be uh absent? Or just blanked out? Um, because, you know, if we made those many calls or contacts, and then how many personal uh in-person of of course with all the. The uh required safety measures, how many in-person uh visit?
Intentionality, if you will, where we are actually inviting um the parent and the student. Still yet in a virtual setting so that we can practice safety to to actually to pull together what I call plans of support. And if it is something within the home where there is a community partner or a community resource that we believe. Uh, would be a help to the family through Director Black and her staff at the Office of School Culture. We're moving in a direction where we're more support and service-oriented, and so we do have. Uh, a mechanism in place and we have plans to move that forward over the um next coming weeks.
So if if a parent that you want to work with says, you know, we're unemployed. We don't have income coming in. We're gonna have to move out of this house. We're being evicted. I mean, all those things are impacting a child's ability to learn. I mean, do we have? You know, uh, the the resource to to uh refer this parent somewhere for some help? Because I don't care what you do, when families have these situations at hand, they're not going to be able to help their child. I mean, that's probably the least thing they're thinking about, besides having food for the for the family and and a place to stay. So I, you know, I, and and I, you know, you guys are doing a great job, you know, first of all. But there are some some real-life issues that are impacting our community, and we need to be aware of that. And that's what I'm saying, maybe we need to to partner with with other folks within the city to help us with those kinds of issues. That that are impacting the child's uh ability to learn or or to stay focused. Uh, maybe they're hungry, even though we give them food. But, you know, uh, other things that impact. Uh, I mean, you know, we know that even when they come to class. You know, things that happen at home affect their their willingness or ability to learn. I mean, it's probably much worse now that they're home all day. And and facing the situation they're facing all day long, let alone, you know. Um, uh, not not able to come to school where they can stay away from that, at least for those hours. So that that's what I'm looking at. I I guess I'm talking about mental health issue, health issues, health issues, period. You know, and all those things that are 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 true life uh issues that happen uh in our community. So. Um, I I hope that there's something that you have uh. In the conversations, you know, have you have learned so that we can uh uh try to do um whatever we can for that child and that family.
Let me just respond real quick to Mr. Lopez. Um, as a former uh principal for many years and. We always have had community partners and community places that we could refer families to. And many times, the schools are the ones that find out first that those are, those are issues. And um whether it's a counselor or a student support specialist or a principal or a teacher. Uh, I can remember lots of times it was a bus driver that could maybe could tell you. So everybody is what is. Is really tuned in, and and I think the the difference now is that trying to do it virtually, it 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 is a challenge. But um, you, uh, you might not be, but I I'm always amazed at what people can do. Um, in this type of environment right now. Um, I I think one of the things you brought up is important for us to know is that. And maybe somewhere along the line, we can compile some data on the reasons why kids, kids, uh, students were not here. That we thought would be here this year, whether it's is, whether it was mo- moved or economic, you know, there's lots of different reasons it could be. But that's, you could look for that, some sort of data on that coming in maybe next month. It was as we dig down a little deeper, and I I hope I'm not uh putting this in a hole here, Jessica, I'm sorry. I think we can figure it out.
Well, I I mean, it's just reality. I mean, you know, you can't get away from that. So. Ms. Black?
Thank you, thank you.
Were you gonna say something?
I would like to respond a little bit, if I could, if you don't mind. Um, we do have a lot uh in place. I support uh everything that you've you've said a- as well as our superintendent. I do, um, I would like to give you a few um examples of some of the things that we do have in place. Um, we have our homeless program. Um, Rose Tap House is our coordinator of that program where she. Um, works with students that have been identified as uh being displaced, and she will support those families. Um, with um clothing, uh food items, uh transportation. Uh, and various other kinds of housing, uh resources, um, connections that she has from. Um, all over the city, uh various organizations that offer support and assistance to. Uh, families who are struggling uh and i- if you would, around housing. Uh, we have, uh, I am connected uh with the Ingham County Health Department. Who uh provides the district with uh mental health consultants. We have three on staff. Um, that've been loaned out to the Lansing School District to assist with uh mental health, uh, students uh. Around emotional and behavioral assist um uh challenges. Uh, we have um mental health specialists here in the uh Lansing School District. Uh, that also uh support our students around, again, um. Uh, behavioral and uh mental health um challenges. We have our school counselors, student support specialists, and even. In some cases, our public safety officers can help, at least uh to the point where they can refer. Uh, them over to uh the next uh most qualified person to assist that stu- student and and family, I should say, too. Because we also work a lot with not just the student, but the families. Um. Uh, just recently, we were awarded um uh uh assistance through um Ingham County. Or, excuse me, the Ingham I- Just recently, we were awarded assistance through Ingham County, or excuse me, the Ingham ISD, where we have been provided to be a mental health consultant to work with us in designing and tightening up our system and systems around mental health and the supports that we provide, not only to students and parents, but self-care and focusing on our staff. And so I think that there are a lot of supports in place. We do have a ton of faith-based organizations that also assist with individual schools around food pantries and clothing and things like that. So I just wanted to touch base on that. I hope that that, between the couple of different answers that you've heard, but I do support you and your request for digging down a little deeper in regards to providing some data around exactly what it is we're doing. Thank you.
Well, thank you. It's good to know that. And even though I know Rose for a long time, and I know you do a lot of that, not everybody knows it, especially in the community. So I just want to focus on the fact that, you know, yeah, we can have a plan and we can have everything, but if the kids are not ready to learn, they're not gonna be ready to learn, for whatever reason. So thank you for that. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Lopez, any further questions?
Thank you, thank you. I really, I'm not going to say enjoy the dialogue because it's sad, but I really was impressed. But the creativity of the team in these difficult situations and new situations for everybody. I have had the opportunity to talk with some parents, and I had the impression that the parents of Lansing are really doing whatever they can to help the students. And also, they had a lot of gratitude to the Lansing School District for whatever Lansing School District are doing, including giving them a chair or giving them a table. Then I think that we had to tell them, thank you for accepting the situation that we are having. The dialogue with them never had to stop, has to improve, has to be different than before. But nonetheless, we can improve even more because the parents now are more involved in education than the children done before. They are with them at home all day long. This now has to us to go to them. The kids are not coming to us. Even we ask them, we are the one who had to go to them and their families and to see all the situation. I would ask that maybe we send five questions to the parents, asking them, what do you need? What do you like about what is going on? Maybe different for high school, for elementary schools. That we connect them, that they participate in the process and learning and going through all the difficult times. I hear everything about the attendance. And the thing is that we are going to, we are going to have another accounting in two months that we had to have the students. I would like to see if we can go by school, by grades, or by part of the city. Maybe this part of the city is not doing right. Even the students go to different schools, but it's the south side, the north side. This area are having, and then the team of thirty-five and forty, I don't know what these thirty-five and forty are going to do. Maybe I need a little bonus specific answer to this initiative with thirty-five or forty. Because it's a great group. Then maybe I need a little bit more of dedication of ten and what exactly these thirty-five or forty people are going to be doing. And the other one is about the nurses. How many nurses do we have in the Lansing School District at this time? And we have also two clinics, Wathen Easter and one in Sexton. Are we working with them and doing anything with them to help us? Finally, I am glad that you connect with IISD and mental health because that is one of the things we talked in the last meeting with all the representatives. I am glad to do that because it's not only what the students are learning, I am concerned about, and I hope that you study that, about the social and emotional situation of our students. The one is about what these thirty-five, forty people are going to do. And then how many nurses we have in the Lansing School District.
Let me handle this. Dr. Rodriguez, we have ten school nurses right now in the school district. We also, the thirty-five to forty people that you're referring to were public safety officers and student support specialists who have spent a great deal of time tracking down students and families that we could not connect with. So they have other duties. Is this, if your question is what else are, what are they gonna do now? They have other duties, but that was their assignment at the beginning of the school year to make sure that we could find the families and students that we needed to find. Ms. Black, did you have anything you want to add to that?
No, you're correct. I don't know if he was referring to the attendance initiative or our public safety...
Attendance initiative, yes.
We will, we will be doing a report, probably not a report, a presentation on our attendance initiative in the coming weeks. We haven't got it on the calendar yet, but they've been working very hard on lots of issues. And that's where many of the things are coming from that we're talking about, that where we went out to find kids and all the other things that go along with that. And you may remember, Dr. Rodriguez, in back, because I remember when you and I worked together here, where we would have retired people that we hired to go out and look. Mr. Armstrong and Mr. Polanski, and there was several of them that would go around. So we have the staff right now that we're doing that because this is very different, as we've all acknowledged right now. And it's much harder. It is, it's just much harder. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, I have another question. As I said, how are we helping the students from Beekman? And are we doing something with these students or helping the families or anything with the Beekman students? How are we dealing with them?
Well, as Dr. Diaz said, and I'll let her talk in a second, but as she said in her, in the report as part of the presentation, we are looking at evaluations. We are, where students would have, could have their evaluations or reevaluations also. We're still delivering meals to Beekman students, so they make sure that we have, we're making sure they get that. We are still doing Special Olympics things. And we're still working on what something would look like in terms of, oh, let me back up. We have a student, several, several students coming in to do some adaptive PE courses. So it's kind of, as we go, we're kind of trying to make it work. But Dr. Diaz, please feel free to jump in.
Thank you, Superintendent Sinicropi. The services that we're currently providing face-to-face to our students with IEPs are occupational therapy services, physical therapy services, adaptive PE, and evaluation services. So we have very carefully set up systems to protect students and staff in order to provide some of these services. But as we can all kind of imagine, doing occupational therapy and physical therapy from a distance over a screen is pretty much impossible. So if families are comfortable with having their student come in to have in-person supports, we are providing that for them. We provide transportation for them as well. So the student comes and has their therapy services and is transported to and from that location. We are also wanting to continue with evaluations with students who either have come up to an evaluation, a reevaluation, so they have an IEP already and they're due for a three-year, what we call MET. And then, and then we have students who were initially referred for an evaluation that are having an initial evaluation. And those students are also being transported, if needed, to evaluation sites for face-to-face evaluations. So we're working as best we can, keeping everyone safe, to try to expand services as feasible.
Thank you. Thank you again to the board members and to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Any further questions from the board? Okay, thank you again, executive team, for all of your work. You guys are the best. We really, really appreciate it, and we appreciate this presentation this evening. Thank you so much. All right, well, with no further, right? Let me double-check my agenda. Okay, with no further business before the board, at 7:41, we are adjourned.